I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of December 2nd, 2021. To order at 6 o'clock PM and ask Clerk Simski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Simonovic.
Here.
Trustee, what's your name?
Guzzo.
Guzzo. I was teasing you.
And staff, we're ready?
Well, no, Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
And our manager. Everybody is leaving me right now.
I'm here.
Manager May is here.
Manager May and Assistant Manager.
Parker here.
All right. Would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. At this point, open forum. If there's anybody who wants to address the board, if an item that's not on the agenda now's the time, seeing none, I close open forum and move on to reports. My report is first, and I'm going to call on Deputy Chief O'Hare to give us a COVID-19 update. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Gunter. While COVID had been trending in the right direction prior to Thanksgiving, unfortunately, in Illinois and many other states, cases are back up over the past two weeks now. So in the U.S., cases are up 26%. Hospitalizations have held about still, decreasing 1%, and deaths have decreased 13% over the U.S. In Illinois, the positivity rate is currently 3.7. Cases are up 60%. Hospitalizations are up 30%, and deaths have stood still with a 0% change. In DuPage County, transmission rate remains high. Test positivity is at 3.4 and increasing every day. Hospitalizations remain low at approximately five per day. Deaths also remain low at one per day. And the total cases for DuPage County year-to-date, or throughout the course of COVID have been 118,217 with 1,488 deaths. Westmont cases are 2,896 and have had no deaths in the past two weeks due to COVID.
Any questions? Thank you. In regards to 100th anniversary, we will have the, our anniversary parade, which is Frosty and Friends Parade, this Saturday, starting at 5:00. And the parade starts in marches south on Cass Avenue from Chicago Naperville Road, and it'll go south over the tracks and then turn on Quincy towards Village Hall. But they'll stop there when Santa arrives. They're going to have the tree lighting, which the tree is at Westmont Center. And then after the tree lighting, we're going to ask everybody to walk towards Village Hall to watch fireworks and have an opportunity to take some pictures with Santa. He'll be in his sleigh. You could be, and the kids could be outside the sleigh, and parents could take their own pictures, or grandparents, or whatever. So that's this Saturday. We hope everybody attends. Again, the parade was canceled last year. We're looking forward to having the parade this year. And one quick item, I don't think anybody else is going to cover it, but there was some confusion on the leaf pickup, and I know I talked to Larry McIntyre. We've publicized the ending date of November 26th in four or five different publications or on the website. But unfortunately, including me, have said during the month of November, there's free leaf pickup. So it was supposed to end on the 26th, and there were some people, including my neighborhood, on Tuesday that had leaves out. The Waste Management did come back and pick those up on Wednesday.
Right.
Yeah, they did. So we're going to make sure next year that it's, we don't have that confusion again. It's part, you know, it's my fault, and anybody else who said during the month of November, I think all of us had kind of said that, so.
It's actually not inaccurate, you know, when it's described. And I actually went back and watched the last three meetings and the report sections, and it references, you know, in the month of November and during November, and it's true that it all happens, but it's depending on how you're interpreting that. And this is the first year we've had any confusion with it, but, you know, it was a good point. The point being that, you know, our pickup in town is over four days, and two of the days were in November, and then the first and the second were in December. So there was an odd number of pickup days if you would strictly just use the entire month, or through, no one ever said through the end of November. But it's still not misleading, it's just, you know, confusing.
And again, it's published the 26th, and unfortunately, we've been stressing the month of November. So I apologize to anybody who had to, because I had my neighbor starting to throw leaves in my yard, so I told them. I said, wait, wait, wait. So, but again, we apologize if anybody was confused. We'll make sure next year it's clearly stated, or we'll make sure we state the ending date. Clerk Simski.
I just want to remind everybody that the Village Office closures will be December 23rd and 24th for Christmas. So all our Village offices will be closed then. I want to also encourage everybody to go to the Westmont High School Band Booster Craft Show. It's December 4th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and it's a perfect way to shop local and support our high school boosters. And they usually have pretty nice things there, so.
That's a big craft there.
Yeah, just encourage everyone to go.
And then they can go to the parade. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. The Administration Finance Committee meeting for tonight was canceled, not for lack of interest, but lack of information. So that was canceled, but I have a lot of community events that I want to talk about. First is the Downtown Painted Windows Project. Check out all the businesses that participated in this fun project that brings excitement and creativity to our downtown. Participating businesses include Neat Restaurant, Tarazi Restaurant, Urban Vets, Expressions Dance, and Artistic Pursuit. Then we also have the Kris Kringle Pub Crawl. It's coming out on Saturday, December 11th, and you can sign up at westmondevents.com. Holidays Home Decorating Contest is on, and we've had a lot of activity happening. We're seeing a lot of houses decorating this year, which is very, very nice. Please go to the Village website for the Holidays Home Decorating Contest at westmont.illinois.gov. We also have a Frost, Finding Frosty Challenge. Next week, Westmont Special Events will hide their Frosty the Snowman decoration at a new location all week long. Find Frosty, take a picture, and enter in a raffle to win restaurant gift certificates and more. Please sign up at westmondevents.com. And then lastly, we're starting a monthly painting class. Westmont Special Events is co-hosting its first painting class with the Creative Arts Network on December 13th at Neat Kitchen. All artistic abilities are welcome, from the beginner to the experienced. Sign up through the Westmont Special Events website. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is December 16th, 4:30, right here at Village Hall. And if those of you haven't seen, the 63rd and Richmond Stormwater Project, it is completed. The new gateway sign is up. Definitely go check it out. I know there's a few comments of people concerned that we cut too much down, but unfortunately, you got to clean it up and get the right plants in there in order for the design to take hold. So be patient. It'll look beautiful in a couple of years and much, much better for all those residents around there. New Village Fueling Center, depending on the weather, should be opened up really, really soon, so sit tight for that. And just a comment on the leaf pickup. I don't know if I misspoke, but I do remember saying in November. I apologize, but I did get a couple of calls, and I referred them to the Waste Management phone number right away, and they came out the same day and next day, a couple spots around town. So thanks to Waste Management for, you know, kind of standing behind it and getting it done and cleaning it up for the neighbors. And I know they were real happy with it at the end of the day. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Simonovic.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure everyone is aware that the Police Public Safety Committee meeting for December 22nd has been canceled. The next meeting will be held on January 27th, 2022. I'm also happy to report that HR is doing a great job at filling the open positions that we've had, and I want to welcome those that started in our firefighter candidate program this week. Thank you.
Trustee Jomani Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next Fire Public Safety Committee meeting will be March 10th, 2022, 4:30 here at Village Hall. Everyone is invited to attend. And Keep the Wreath Red Program. I'd like to ask Deputy Chief O'Hare to come on up and just give us a little brief on this. I know that this program has been going on for many decades, and I just think it's a great way to keep all of our residents safe during the holiday season.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. So we have our Keep the Wreath Red Program, which goes from December, I'm sorry, December 1st through January 2nd. And it's a program aimed at bringing awareness to fire safety regarding holiday decorations. So we have a wreath at each firehouse that's illuminated in red lights, and in the unfortunate event that we have a fire in town that was determined to be caused from holiday decorations, we changed the lights to a white light. And so that's to help remind everyone to use safety precautions when decorating both the inside and outside of your house. And on the website, we have a press release with all the different initiatives that you can take, from extension cord, mindfulness, to where you should put your tree, and reminding you to water it regularly. So there's a bunch of good tips on the website within the press release, and that's the Keep the Wreath Red Program. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. And Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The December Planning and Zoning Commission's agenda next week will include several entitlements required for Mrs. T's Pizza and Pub, which is moving into the property of 2 West Naperville Road, which currently is Golden Basket. Text amendment recommendation to improve the zoning definition for craft alcohol beverage dispensers to be considered. Two entitlements required for the Whiskey Hill Brewing Company, which will locate on the ground floor of 1 West Quincy here when it's in, as a craft alcohol beverage dispenser. Also a text amendment recommendation to define and regulate wireless telecommunications facilities, including cell antennas, cell towers, and to amend current requirements for other types of antennas. Also like to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission, go through all its detailed work for us as a board to make a recommendation. One last thing, which is not related to Westmont, but next Saturday, on December 18th, at the Arlington Abraham Lincoln National Cemetery, there's a national wreath lane ceremony. It's have us nationwide. It's called Wreaths Across America. The program starts 11:00 in the morning. I've been there several times. It gets quite crowded there. So if anybody's interested to put down a wreath, it's a very humbling effect to put a wreath down on a fire service member that's interned in Arlington National, at the Abraham Lincoln Cemetery. I suggest if anybody's interested, be sure to get there and go later at 8:00 in the morning. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. All of you know that I am the chairman of the Westmont First Committee, and this holiday season is a perfect time to remind everybody what Westmont First is all about. This season is, you know, it's filled with people volunteering for all the holiday activities. So Westmont First asks people to volunteer in their committee and to support local charities. There's a number of charities and co-drives and various things that organizations are doing, and we ask everybody to step up and get involved in those and help out as much as they can. And then lastly, you know, when you, when you think about shopping for holidays, support our local businesses. If you can buy it here in Westmont, buy it here in Westmont First. And if you can't go, you know, go somewhere else, but, you know, give Westmont a shot. That's your business dollars, and it helps us all. So that's something that I wanted to remind everybody of this holiday season. And then also, the Environmental Improvement Committee will meet Monday night, December 6th, at 5:30 PM in the library. And currently, there is a program for cooking oil recycling through the Downers Grove Sanitary District. It's located at 2710 Curtis Street in Downers Grove. And then we have the Holiday Lights Recycling, two locations at the Westmont Public Library and the parking lot there, and the South Fire Station. So your holiday lights that have failed you can be put in those bins, and then that will be recycled. So that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
One last item before we move on the agenda. You're talking about shop local. The Chamber Winter Ball has been postponed or canceled. Where's Larry's here, somewhere? But they are having a raffle, and the raffle is to support our local businesses. So I don't know, Larry, if you want to come up and just mention. It's all online, and it's a great opportunity to get shop local and dine local.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is something that the Chamber did last year, kind of tied to holidays. It's a raffle for a different variety of restaurant certificates and all kinds of different prizes. You can go to westmontchamber.com, and the proceeds are there to use to help support the Chamber.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, public hearing, property tax levy hearing. Board to conduct a public hearing regarding the tax levy for the village of Westmont. And I'm going to turn it over, well, I'll open to anybody here for, I'll turn it over to Mr. Parker to talk about it, then I'll open the open forum.
So there are two public hearings on the agenda. Cover the first one first. So this first one is one that the village is doing. It's an optional public hearing, but the village is doing it in the interest of transparency. And it's about the village property tax levies specifically for the village and the library. We have our library director, Julia Cohen, here in case there are any questions. This has been discussed in a lot more detail at prior committee meetings and board meetings, but in terms of grand totals, we are levying a total property tax levy of $9,583,437, though we expect to really receive about $9.3 million of that is our best estimate for what we'll receive from the county once they do all of their calculations. It's about a 4.6% increase, and because it's less than 5%, that's why the public hearing is not technically required, but the village still likes to do it to get any input from the public.
At this point, I'll open. Anybody here for that topic? Seeing none, I will close the open forum for the village of Westmont, and we'll move on to the property tax levy hearing for the special service area. Assistant Manager Parker.
So this is also a property tax levy. This one is for the special service area number two, is what it's technically designated. It's the, formerly the North Fire Protection District. And as you will recall, a number of years ago, the district and the village had been entered into agreements to provide fire protection services, and it was determined at that point that the property tax that was being paid in the district was a little bit less than what was being paid in the village. And as part of that whole discussion, the district was eliminated, and we've done a special service area. And then over a number of years, we would get their rates up to be about where the residents are. So this is the last large increase, and so because of that, we do have more than a 5% increase this year, and that is what requires us to hold this public hearing specifically.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing on the special service area. Seeing no one, I'll close public hearing, and we'll move on to the items removed from consent agenda. Does any board member want any of the items removed? Seeing none, I ask Manager May to please read.
The consent agenda starts with the Village Board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held November 18, 2021. That's followed by finance ordinance number 16, in the amount of $2,952,957.39. There are no purchase orders, so the finance ordinance is the total. Community events, there's one community event for 2021 Westmont Holidays. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following request from Westmont Holidays Committee for the 2021 Westmont Holidays Parade Tree Lighting and Fireworks on Saturday, December 4, 2021. Versus permit amplified sound in the downtown business district near Westmont Center, 4 to 8:00 PM. Close sections of several streets from Naperville Road to 55th Street from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM for the Holidays Parade. Close West Quincy Street from Cass Avenue to Adams from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM for the Holidays Parade. Close East Quincy Street from Cass Avenue to Womet from 4:00 PM to 6:30 PM for a fireworks presentation. And close North Linden from Burlington to Chicago Avenue for a parade staging area between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Do you have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve as read, Little.
Second, Nero. Got a motion and second. Any comments? Questions? Reason the holidays on the consent agenda is the same in previous years, so nothing has changed. Seeing no comments or questions, I'd ask for a roll call.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Now we're going to go on to the, after we had our public hearing, we need property tax levy to Village Westmont. Board to consider ordinance adopting the 2021 tax levy for the village of Westmont in the amount of $9,583,437. And I need a motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Parker.
Motion made in second to approve. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business B, the second public hearing item, the property tax levy for the special service area two. Board to consider ordinance adopting the 2021 tax levy for the village of Westmont Special Service Area Two. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Guzzo. Second, Little.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, this one, I'm going to have Spencer talk a little bit. Abatement of Taxes. Board to consider ordinance abating the taxes heretofore, levied for, the year 2021 to pay debt service on the general obligation bonds, which are alternate revenue source, Series 2013A, as general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2013B, as general obligation bonds, alternate, they're all alternate revenue source, Series 2017, general obligation bonds, Series 2019A, and the general obligation bond Series 2019B of the village of Westmont. This is an annual task we have, and I'll turn it over to Spencer, to Assistant Village Manager Parker.
So we've issued a number of bonds over the last several years, and the way those bonds have worked, to get the best interest rate we can, it's their alternate revenue bonds, where we say we expect to pay for it from specific revenues, but if those revenues aren't enough, then we do have the ability to put it onto property taxes. And so each year, we have to let the county know that we do have enough money to cover it the way we initially planned to, so those don't end up on property taxes for our residents. That's what this is.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Parker.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Questions? None? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business D, 319 North Lincoln Street, a variance. Board to consider ordinance approving a request from Robert Burkey for the zoning code variance requests to allow driveway to encroach into the required side yard setback for the property located at 319 North Lincoln Street. And I want Director Sylvester to give us additional information.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, this is a request for a variance from the village's requirement that any sort of pavement, like a driveway, be separated from a lot line by three feet. And we do that so that people's driveways aren't crossing over the lot line onto their neighbors' properties, creating grass strips between driveways that are near each other on separate properties, et cetera. The applicants, who are both here tonight, have a legal non-conforming lot that's more narrow, and the house that's been there for decades is situated in such a way that there is no way that they could get a driveway that they want and need without putting it closer to the lot line. So they're asking for a variance so that they can put the driveway in closer to the lot line than we would normally allow. Plan Commission considered this at a public hearing a few weeks ago and recommended approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the variance?
Motion to approve, Simonovic.
Second, Nero. Motion made second. Comments? Anybody from the audience? Nobody? Roll call, please.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes. Motion passes. This is where the Planning and Zoning does all the lifting, and we get to approve it. So again, thank them for all the work they do. New business E, accessory public utility buildings text amendment. Board to consider a zoning ordinance text amendment to Appendix A, Section 4.05, permitted accessory structures and uses in yards, regulating accessory public utility buildings. And Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, this item is directly related to and linked to the item following it on the agenda, but let me start with the text amendment first. Westmont has rules, like a lot of communities, that prohibit manufacturing and commercial land uses from having accessory structures. So residential properties, single-family homes, you can have a detached garage, you can have a gazebo, you can have a shed, but in our manufacturing district and in our commercial districts, there are strict rules prohibiting businesses from having accessory structures. And there's a lot of reasons for that, and a lot of it has to do with storage and fire department inspections and safety and just making businesses do their activities within one building rather than spreading out into multiple buildings. But we've discovered that there is an instance where for a particular situation down at 200 West 63rd Street, which is the next item on the agenda, AT&amp;T has owned that property for decades, and they have some regional fiber optic and telephone lines running all over the property. And they're trying to consolidate all of those buried utilities to one side of the property, and to do that, they need a structure that would house cooling equipment, fans and blowers, that would blow through all that buried tubes and pipes to keep all of that fiber optic equipment cool. The current rules don't allow them to have a structure like that because of the zoning they have. So we're proposing a text amendment that basically says in very specific situations, and if you look at the draft language, it's pretty narrowly written, some kinds of non-residential uses in very limited circumstances can have an accessory structure. So that's the purpose of the proposed text amendment, and because it is written so narrowly, we don't believe that it will be used often, and we don't believe that there'll be lots of property owners in the manufacturing districts and the business districts putting up, you know, sheds and garages all over. So that's the first item, if you want to discuss that first before we get to the next one.
P and Z, approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. So this was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was discussed in more detail, but they understand what we're trying to accomplish, and they recommended approval.
So I'm looking for a motion to, for the zoning.
And there's a question over here, Mr. Mayor.
Oh. I just wanted to clarify the, I mean, he gave a specific example, but this motion is about the text amendment only, not about the particular address yet.
It's an example. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second.
Motion made second. Comments? Any discussion? Anybody in the audience seeing? Nope. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Okay, just a second. Is this for 319, no, not 319, accessory public?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because these are all connected, so. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business F, 200 West 63rd Street Site and Landscape Plan Approval. Board to consider an ordinance approving requests from EXP US Services Incorporated in AT&amp;T for a site and landscaping plan to construct an accessory public utility building located at 200 West 63rd Street, located in the C1 Commercial Business District. And Director Sylvester.
So AT&amp;T owns the property at 200 West 63rd Street. It's actually a very long north-to-south-through lot that extends all the way up to 61st Street on the north. It has frontage on the north as well, but it's one property, and we refer to it as 200 West 63rd Street. As I mentioned earlier, AT&amp;T owns it. It's got buried utilities all over that place that have been installed over the decades, and they're trying to clean up their site and consolidate all of their buried infrastructure on one side of the property. And again, they need a structure to house the equipment that will keep all of that buried infrastructure cool. As you all know, I believe, and Westmont is in most communities, if you want to build any sort of a building or a structure, anywhere pretty much outside of single-family zoning, you have to go through what's called site and landscape plan review, where you show the Planning and Zoning Commission where you want the building on a site plan, if you're providing parking or not, where, how you're going to provide landscaping, what the building is going to look like, et cetera. So this request is specifically for site and landscape plan approval, which includes all of those details, where this small accessory building will sit on the lot, how it will look, what its appearance will be, its materials, how it will be landscaped, et cetera. The applicants are here if you have questions. And this did go through Planning and Zoning specifically now for the proposed building and the required site and landscape plan. Was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at a public hearing, and they did recommend approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second, comments? Director Sylvester, this allows the splitting of that property someday to sell, so the building taking all that underground and making the land usable on 63rd for commercial if we need it. So this is a big plus for moving ahead.
That's exactly right. This allows the site to be cleaned up in such a way that if the owners wish, and I believe that's their intention, they could sell it for some other development, perhaps a commercial use in the future. But with the current situation of the utilities running here, there, and everywhere on the site, you couldn't build anything on that property.
Just as AT&amp;T, are they aware of this? Are they cooperating?
Well, AT&amp;T is the applicant. They're the ones that are proposing this. They would like...
Those are training facilities for several years, you know, for their installers.
Right. There's two existing buildings on the site, and one of them is for training, and there's a lot of uses going on there. But it's AT&amp;T that's requesting this so that they can clean up the site, basically.
Thank you.
If and when they sell it, it makes it more usable, the entire lot, by doing it this way. So I don't know if you wanted to comment anything, or we're answering all your questions for you. So really, this is a plus for the community, for the village, to get more commercial on 63rd Street, so. Any other comments? Anybody seeing the roll call, please?
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business G, 547 63rd Street Lot Subdivision and Rezoning. Board to consider ordinance approving requests from Calatoga Home Builders regarding the property at 547 63rd Street for the following. One, map amendment to rezon from R1 Single Family Detached Residence District to R3 Single Family Detached Resident District. And two, preliminary and final platte subdivision to establish three buildable residential lots in the R3 Single Family Detached Residence District. Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, just a brief bit of background, if everyone's familiar, if you had east on 63rd and you passed the Taiwanese Center and you passed Ridge, there are six very large lots, each with small homes on them, and those were annexed about three or four years ago by the village. And when they were annexed, we automatically assign R1 zoning, which requires very large lots. About two years ago, a developer came forward with a proposal for an apartment building on all of those lots that went through the Planning and Zoning Commission, generated a lot of resistance and opposition from the neighbors. It never made it up in front of you because before it got to you, the applicant, based on the opposition at the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing, withdrew their proposal. Fast forward a year or two, and the applicants who are with us here tonight have said that on the first lot at the corner of Ridge and 63rd, again, these are very large lots, they want to rezone it to R3, which is single-family residential, but it allows smaller lots, and that's what most of the village is, and with that zoning, they would be able to subdivide it into three buildable lots. The only other thing I would add, well, two things I'd add. If you're familiar with the west side of Ridge, so between Ridge and the Taiwanese Center, there are three homes from the corner going south. This proposal would pretty much recreate a mirror image of that exact type of development on the east side. Same-sized lots, similar-sized homes. And importantly, the second thing I'll add is I want to thank the applicants for their patience. There will be a stormwater detention facility in the lowest part of the land, which happens to be on the north side of the land closest to 63rd. So it took staff some time to work through the design and the engineering and some of the covenant language that will make sure that that detention facility is maintained, and it's clear who's responsible for maintaining that detention facility over the coming decades. So that did take some time, and the applicants were very patient as staff worked through some of those details.
Director Sylvester, that detentions for all three lots?
The detention will serve the three homes, correct?
Three homes, yeah, okay. So they're putting it on one and funneling all the...
Correct.
Subdivision requirement.
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second, additional comments? Any questions for the developer? Yes, trustee Nero?
Bruce, who, just curious, who does maintain that? Is it divided by the three home, the future homeowners, or how does that work?
So I'll start, but I'll hope that the village attorney jumps in if I get this wrong. But the language that it took us some time to craft imposes on each of the three lots a requirement that they jointly maintain that facility. So, you know, if weed trees grow up in it, hire someone to clear out the weed trees. If the outlet pipe clogs up, go muck it out or hire someone to muck it out. And the language that the village attorney drafted clearly explains all of that, and then importantly, sets up a mechanism so it's attached to the title. So if you are the purchaser of the lot furthest from that facility, you know, or in theory, you're informed, that that is a responsibility that comes with buying that third house.
Okay.
And we're doing this because we found some examples where that language wasn't created, and it just creates problems down the road about how do we handle these situations.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Trustee Barker?
Bruce, would you have any idea the approximate home values that we'd be looking at over there?
You know, I, you think I would, but I don't. But the person who would is probably the developer.
What do you, what do you talk about there? Would you, just approximate range of what a home would be there?
So this is Kazi, he's about close to 900.
900? Going up to the podium, and that way we can, everybody can hear.
Free commercial. Yeah. I'm Kazi with Calatoga Home Builders. Here we are asking about close to 900 apiece, yes.
That's all, I was just curious as to what we're doing over there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Any other comments from the audience anymore? Need a roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business H, Bowling Alley Tax Amendment. Board to consider zoning ordinance tax amendment to Article 14B, definitions of the zoning ordinance to create a definition for bowling alleys. Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, this is another one with some interesting backstory. Over the summer, we received an application for a business to do barbecue preparation and sales at the bowling alley, and in trying to just process that with the business license and the inspections, it sort of snowballed into a complicated situation, which led us to realize that we need to have some sort of rules in place to deal with these situations where you've got a main business on a property and then sort of businesses that maybe rent or use the parking lot, for example. So you've got multiple businesses on one lot. It got really messy really fast. The result of all that, one, we realized that we don't have a definition in our zoning code currently for bowling alleys, so we said we need a definition. And then, two, we needed to grant a special use permit, and this is bleeding into the second item after this, because this is another one where they're linked. We needed to grant a special use permit to the bowling alley and address other businesses' use of the bowling alley's parking lot. So that's just some of the background, but this particular item, item H, that you're voting on now, is basically just a very simple amendment to our zoning ordinance creating a definition for bowling alleys. Planning and Zoning Commission did discuss it and recommended approval.
Have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Guzzo. Second, Little?
Motion made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Motion passes. You've got all these that lead into another one here.
Right.
201 West Ogden Avenue Suburbanite Special Use Permits. Board to consider ordinance's approving requests from Suburbanite Bowl Incorporated and Clover's Garden Center LLC regarding the property located at 201 West Ogden Avenue for the following. One, special use permit to operate a bowling alley in the B2 General Business District. And two, special use permit to operate a seasonal outdoor sales lot for Clover's Garden Center. Director Sylvester.
So I just explained some of the background. The irony is, the business that started this entire discussion was a barbecue restaurant. Since that business proposal started this discussion, and it took us a couple of months to work through all the details, I believe they are no longer in the picture and interested in operating from the parking lot of the bowling alley. But we did go ahead and put on tonight's agenda and discuss this with the Planning and Zoning Commission, of sort of tying up the loose ends and making the bowling alley, you know, legal and conforming and kosher and crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is by giving them a special use permit, even though we all know they've been there for decades. And at the same time, there's another business, Clover's, that does use the parking lot seasonally, and in the past, they've periodically received special use permits on short-term, like two- and three-year basis, and we're now making that a more permanent arrangement, subject to review if there's ever a concern. So this is really sort of a cleanup and just sort of crossing the Ts and dotting the Is for what's already been in place for years and years and years, the bowling alley and Clover's use of the parking lot in the summer.
Does this, I need two motions, but is this, this sort of concept would apply to, like, a jewel or somebody running a business on their lot too, right? Okay, so they need a special use permit?
Yes, Christmas tree sales.
Christmas tree, yeah, anything like that, okay. All right. I need two motions. I need one special use permit to operate a bowling alley in the B2 General Business District. Motion?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second, any comments? Only operate a bowling alley, how many years you been there?
2065.
I know.
Thank goodness we get these jobs.
You have...
The owners have been very patient.
I know, they've been, yeah. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Congratulations, you're a bowling alley. I need a motion to special use permit to operate a seasonal outdoor sales lot for the Clover's Garden Center. Do I have a motion?
Route number two, Nero?
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second, comments? This is something that's been going on for years too. Get a lot of plants, flowers there, so I don't see any issues, so any discussion? I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on, new business, 538 65th Street Lot Subdivision and Rezoning. Board to consider ordinance approving requests from Jason Han and Daniel and Gerald Smits regarding the property at 538 65th Street for the following. One, map amendment request to rezon from R1 Single Family Detached Residence District to R3 Single Family Detached Resident District. And two, preliminary and final platte subdivision to establish two buildable residential lots in the R3 Single Family Detached Resident District. Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, this item is not very far from the rezoning and lot split item that you just voted on a couple of moments ago for Agenda Item G. It's just a little south and east of there, and it's similar in most regards, except that whereas the first item you voted on was a three-lot subdivision, this is simply a two-lot subdivision. So it's one large lot, they want to rezon it so that it, so that smaller lots are allowed by rezoning it to R3, again, like most of the villages zone, and then dividing it into two lots. So it's a rezoning and a subdivision. There would be stormwater detention required. This is a little easier stormwater detention to deal with because it would be a facility in the back that would straddle both properties rather than separate from some of the properties. So it's easier, it's more obvious that each property owner is responsible for maintaining it. Planning and Zoning Commission did have a public hearing and recommended approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second. Simonovic?
Motion made in second, discussion, this is no different than the three lots before other than both detentions, so it's built into the title that they're responsible?
Well, it's recorded on the platte that there's an easement for stormwater detention purposes and utility purposes, and that each owner has to maintain the stormwater detention area on their own lot.
Okay. Any questions? Comments?
Roll call, please.
Just a minute. Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?[1629.04]
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business K, Vertra Simulator.
Oh, Bruce, you still want to talk? Real quick, I know where I want to go, but obviously we had a lot of cases on the agenda tonight. We've had some staff turnover. I just want to acknowledge that the new staff we have, the new planner, Joe, really did a lot of work of helping get these applications moving and up in front of you for a vote and just wanted you to be aware that that's why there were so many items on the agenda tonight. We had a bit of a backlog and we're slowly working through that. And I just want to make sure you guys know that Joe Hennerfind really gets the lion's share of the credit for that.
What's his title?
Deputy Director of Community Development-Dash Planning. Mr. Hennerfind.
So we have two deputy directors under you. Okay.
Yeah, that was a recent reorganization of the department, so I'm the department head and now we have two deputy directors under me. We have Deputy Director of Community Development Building Commissioner, Jason Vitell, who's worked for the village for about five years now. And we have a second deputy director in charge of the planning function, and that's Joe Hennerfind, who I believe most of you know worked here for many years, left, and then we recently rehired him about three months ago, and he's filling that position.
And we're going to be hiring a planner to work in his department?
Yeah, so the village historically, and if anyone, if I'm incorrect, please correct me, but I believe historically the villages have one planner. There's a lot of activity and there's a lot of work to be done. And it's my belief, and I'm happy that the village manager agreed, that there's enough, there's more than enough work for two people doing planning work, especially when you get into a lot of the stormwater stuff and the engineering and landscaping and there's just a lot of stuff. So we are going to be hiring a second planner in the department. That person will report to Joe Hennerfind to work with him.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Now we'll move on to new business K. Vertra Simulator Training Revised Agreement and MOU. Board to consider ordinance approving the following revised agreements for the license and use of, and use of, use of force simulator equipment and related training services by the Westmont Police Department. One, revised agreement with Vertra for the joint license of use of force simulator equipment and related training services and revised memorandum of understanding with various agencies to administer the shared use of said equipment. And we've got Deputy Director Thompson. Deputy...
Chief.
Chief!
Or Director for the evening, if you like. This is just a minor update to the contract that we had signed last year. We had the use of force simulator. We had to do scenario-based training as part of the mandate to stay in compliance. We had done this because of the cost. We did this with several other departments and there was several pieces to it. So this is just an update to that contract. I'm not exactly positive if we're paying a little less or a little more, a little less.
A little less.
A little less, but it's just simply an update so that we can continue the lease with the virtual for another year.
One motion. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Simonovic.
Motion made. Second. Comments? Seeing on roll call, please.
Barker.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Motion passes. Chief, quick, under miscellaneous, I guess, press release came out about a shooting or no one got hurt, but maybe just a quick update. I saw that it said there's no concern for the neighborhood, so...
I'll share what I can. We had responded last night to a shots fired call near the Eagle Creek Apartment Complex. When officers arrived, we didn't find a victim at that time, but we ended up finding several shell casings on the ground and found, I believe it was a shattered sliding glass door where it appeared that a bullet had lodged itself or gone through it. Upon further investigation, the victim had come forward after seeing us out there and we received a statement and it sounds like it was an attempted robbery or I believe it actually was, I believe the property actually was taken. So it actually, it was a robbery and the offenders in the case were armed. It's hard to say at this time whether the victim was targeted because of people who knew him or something he had, so we still continue to investigate it. But at this point, I don't believe there's anything much newer than what was put out in the press release.
Okay. Bruce, while you're up there, it came out in a press release. I thought you just mentioned it, so thank you. Any questions? Manager.
I have a different item.
You got another item?
Yeah, if you're done with this one.
Okay.
Didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead, Manager Bank.
I just wanted to ask about the December 30th. Our meeting pattern has three village board meetings in the month of December. Often we have, in many years, the second meeting in December is some sort of a conflict in and around Christmas that we traditionally cancel it. We have the, meeting tonight is the second. You do have a special joint meeting of the village board with EIC and Westmont First. Will be a week from tonight on a Thursday, the joint meeting, and then the regular board meeting on December 16th. I thought about it for two reasons. Bruce brought up the amount of planning load that's going on right now and in the planning and zoning, there'll be another big agenda, you know, in the month of December with planning items. So it is my intention to keep the 12:30 village board meeting scheduled as scheduled. It doesn't interfere with either Christmas or, you know, New Year's. So I guess I'm, I guess it's just an FYI. I'm planning to have the December 30th meeting and it'll likely have planning-related items on it.
I guess the question would be if anybody's planning to be out of town as long as we have a forum.
Will I be able to attend virtually?
Can make that available, yes.
Yes. Okay, seems like it's good.
All right, thank you.
And again, there's one or two items I asked Director Sylvester that probably is good we meet, so it could be approved rather than waiting till middle of January. So I think it's a good thing to have the meeting. Any other miscellaneous? Anybody got anything to add? Seeing none, there's no executive session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second to adjourn the meeting. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
And again, I want to thank everybody for attending and this meeting is adjourned.